Good afternoon, councillors, and welcome to our special meeting this afternoon for a development application, development application which we'll explain shortly. As we know, these meetings are live streamed and are open to the public. And thank you to the public for being here today or online. We do appreciate it very much indeed. We will begin by opening the meeting with an acknowledgement of traditional owners. This is reconciliation week, therefore, like we do at each of these statutory meetings, I acknowledge the Aboriginal parties whose songlines traverse these lands we meet on today, the Western Waka Waka, Gible and Jarrawa peoples and the Bigable peoples, and pay respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, for they hold the knowledge, rich traditions and bold ambitions of Australia's first people. Councillors, we'll move to item number two, which is the attendance, including apologies, leave of absence, granting leaves of absence and declaration of conflicts of interest. We do have a leave of absence that has been noted and was taken care of at a previous meeting, that is of councillor Tim McMahon, that was at the special, for the special meeting for today. So we do appreciate that from councillor McMahon. And everyone else is present, and thank you for that. Is there any granting of leave of absence required? No granting of leave of absence. We'll then turn our minds, councillors, to any declarable prescribed conflicts of interest or declarable conflicts of interest. Councillor Gary Gardner.
Me, I, councillor Gary Gardner, informed the main over a declarable conflict of interests matters defined in section 150 end of the Local Government Act 2009. The nature of my interest is as follows. The declarable conflict arises because my relation, related business entities, Whitmack Property Limited, has had business dealings with Hall Poultry Pty Ltd in the past. I wish to participate in the decision in relation to this matter. I acknowledge that eligible councillors may now determine pursuant to section 150 S of the Local Government Act 2009, whether I might participate in the decision about the matter, including voting on the matter. Must leave the meeting, including any area set aside for public, and stay away from the meeting while the eligible councillors discuss and vote on the matter, or may participate in the decision about the matter, subject to the conditions.
Thanks very much, councillor Gardner. Are there any questions for councillor Gary? Councillor Rebecca?
Thanks Chair, through you. Thanks councillor Gardner. So it's, you've had business dealings in the past with them, and you're, those are on, they're not ongoing, it's just matters that are in the past.
They're past.
Yep. The appropriate time after questions, Chair, I'm happy to move that councillor Gardner may participate in the matter, including by voting on the matter. And the reason for that is because these are past business dealings. He therefore has nothing that can be gained or lost as a result of the decision of today.
Okay, so Dan's just tapping in in that. As it seems, are there any other questions for councillor Gary? Councillor Gary?
Yeah, thanks. In relation to those dealings where, there's no lingering prejudice in your mind, one way or the other, in terms of your attitude to, to the, to the submitter?
No, not at all. Okay. Okay, so there's no further questions. We've got a motion by councillor Rebecca, seconded by councillor Carroll, that councillor Gary may participate in the decision about the matter, including by voting on the matter. Those in favour? Carried unanimously. Any other conflicts of interest, councillors? If there is something that crops up that we're unaware of at this stage, can you please inform me at that time? Item number three is suspension of standing orders. However, before doing that, I'd like to just, given that we have some other members of the public in the gallery and those watching online, just from a format perspective, the purpose of this suspension of standing orders is so that we can deal with a two-way conversation, if you like, with members of the public. And that means that it'll follow after this motion, that we'll have a presentation by our officer, Jaden Forbes Mitchell, which will include then question time by councillors. Following that presentation, we'll have a presentation by the submitter or representative of the submitter, which in this occasion is James Ewans, Property Projects Australia, on behalf of the submitter. That'll, for 10 minutes, just noting that, James, you're used to five minutes here, but this one, this afternoon, you'll be given 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes, I should say, with a notification at the eight-minute mark. Then we'll have questions from councillors, followed by, that we'll hear from the applicant. And the applicant is Aaron McGee. Aaron, you're with somewhere, thank you, Aaron. And Tal Fleming. There'll be, one of you will be speaking. So you do a paper, rocks, scissors and work that out before we get to it. Okay. You'll have 10 minutes as well. And I'll let you know with two minutes to go. Then we'll have questions from councillors. After that, we reinstate the standing orders, and then we, we move to the item itself, of which there may be more questions from councillors to officers, as we deliberate and get to a final motion for decision. So that gives you an outline of the afternoon's proceedings. So the first motion then is that in accordance with clause 1.2 of best practice example standing orders for local government and standing committee meetings, March 2024, standing orders be suspended for the period of consideration of item number four. Have someone move that. Moved by councillor Trevor. Seconded by councillor James, those in favour. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, and welcome to interim CEO Colin, GM Carey, and all those officers present, who, some of which will be presenting. Carey, would you like me to hand directly over to Jaden? Jaden, thanks very much. I'll hand over to you.
Thank you Chair, and good afternoon councillors. Today we are considering a development application for a material change of use for non-resident workforce accommodation at Millmarin Cecil Plains Road, Millmarin. This is, if I could please get attachment seven up, which just provides an outline of the proposed development. Thanks. This proposal is for an 800-person temporary accommodation facility, which will house the construction workforce associated with the approved Bullay Creek solar farm, which is west of Millmarin. The camp is intended to operate for 10 years, in line with the expected construction timeline of the associated solar farm. The 800-person capacity allowed for will be required for short periods of peak construction over the 10-year life of the development. However, occupancy is typically expected to be around 400 persons. Movement of workers to and from the camp in the Bullay Creek solar farm project will be via shuttle bus primarily. For context of the site, if I could please get attachment five up on the screen. So the development site is at the periphery of Millmarin, on a rural zoned lot, approximately two kilometres north-east of the town centre. It adjoins the Millmarin aerodrome to the west and showgrounds to the south, and is near to industrial zoned land to the west and also residential zoned land to the south-west. Despite the proximity to town, the site is outside of the priority infrastructure area and does not currently have reticulated water or sewer services. However, these services can be extended to service the site. Key matters in the assessment were land use, infrastructure delivery and impacts on the Millmarin township. On the subject of land use, although the use of the premises for a temporary workers accommodation conflicts with elements of the rural zone code in the planning scheme, the site's peripheral location, proximity to infrastructure, temporary nature of the use and its strategic link to a regionally significant renewable energy project support a conclusion that the use is appropriate at this location. Secondly, upgrades to the Millmarin wastewater treatment plant were identified as necessary to service this development. These will be developer funded as bring forward costs and an infrastructure agreement has been executed to outline these responsibilities. On that, I will just make a note that the executed infrastructure agreement is an additional item that has been tabled at this meeting, and it will be included as an attachment 10. Social impacts arising from the temporary and sudden increase in the town's population are being considered. Unmitigated, the project has the potential to impact community dynamics and the quality of life. However, the project also has the potential to deliver economic and other legacy benefits to the Millmarin community during and beyond the life of the development. A social impact assessment was submitted by the applicant to define these impacts, outline house take holder engagement had been undertaken, and proposed mitigation measures. And this was later revised following a third-party peer review undertaken by council. For reference, the mitigation measures proposed by the proponent Gen X are included in attachment nine to the report. Conditions are proposed to require these mitigation measures to be implemented within the conditioning power afforded to council under the Planning Act. Some of the mitigation strategies proposed by Gen X include monetary and works commitments to residents, businesses and community groups in Millmarin. These have been included within the report and conditions as a record of the commitments pledged by the proponents. However, such commitments are not able to be conditioned by council. Other matters considered in the report, including trafficking, car parking, flooding, landscaping buffers and the operation of the aerodrome, have been assessed and are detailed in the report. These matters are considered to be satisfactory. A properly made submission objecting to the application was received. The matters raised in this submission were carefully considered and have been addressed in the report. I will note that further material was provided by the submitter prior to a decision being made, but after the final assertion of the report before you. Officers have reviewed this as common material to the application and have had regard to its contents. It is considered that the conditions presented at this meeting do not require amending as a consequence. This report recommends approval subject to the imposition of the conditions provided in attachment three. Thanks.
Jaden, thank you very much for that. Just in regard to attachment 10, new for today, can you just talk us through a little bit about that, and then I'll go to questions, if you don't mind?
Certainly. The Millmarin wastewater treatment plant has a occupational capacity that if the development does go ahead, will be exceeded. My understanding is that this relates to the environmental regulations of the wastewater treatment plant. As the development's outside the priority infrastructure area, these are bring forward costs that must be borne by the developer. As a consequence, the most appropriate course of action determined was to draft an infrastructure agreement, to be determined prior to the application being presented to council, whereby the infrastructure agreement sets out the expectations and obligations on the developer to deliver these upgrades to service their development. The infrastructure agreement is structured in such a way that it outlines the infrastructure works, does not impose a monetary amount on those works, and requires essentially that these works are undertaken by council, at no cost to council. The payment for such works will be provided by the proponent to council, following an invoice. That document was executed yesterday.
Thank you, Jaden. So councillors, I've got a questions for Jaden at this stage, or any other council officer? Councillor Gary? Councillor James?
Can I just ask how, you know, what, I suppose, number of people in the camp triggered that upgrade to the water? Was it, I mean, you know, the 800 triggered the upgrade, was it? You know, was it 400 would need the upgrade, or was it always going to need the upgrade? Or, just out of curiosity?
Thank you councillor, through the chair. There was, in the coming years, it was identified that there was a need to upgrade elements of the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Those costs are not to be imposed by the developer. And my understanding is that these works can be undertaken concurrently, but the developer will be only required to undertake the works made necessary by their development. So the demand generated by the development exceeded the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant for the foreseeable future. Yep.
Thanks. Thanks, Jaden. I'll be a bit more to that. Let's answer that question. You will need to go further, Chris?
Yes, someone from Order and Waste.
Oh, great. Yeah, Von, from Order and Waste as well. Did you want to talk a little further about that, Von? This is around the agreement.
Thank you Chair. So I guess just to clarify, the capacity of the plant in terms of a hydraulic capacity doesn't get exceeded by the camp, but it is just around the water quality and the ability to treat with that extra flow through the plant. So yeah, there's, that's the extent of the scope of works, essentially. Yep.
Thanks, Von. Thank you very much. Councillor James?
Hey, thanks man, through you. Thanks. Thanks Jade. My question, I want to ask you this, but also probably I'll flag that it's probably something I know the submitter and the applicant can probably talk to address as well. But you mentioned one of the aspects considered with this was social impact, or so issues like that. So, and I'm just curious because there's a, to use a word, there's an extraordinary list of proposals put forward here from Gen X around addressing this. From an officer point of view, and I know that, I know, and as said in the last, as well, because I know that an assessment's been done by the submitter as well. But how, how is that measured? So from a, from an officer point of view, how, how is that measured? Can you like get an understanding of that? Like what, what is social impact from a planning, black and white point of view? What does that mean?
Right, hand over to, to Chris. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. That's a really interesting question. So social impacts for this kind of development are really all of the broad impacts that could affect the Millmarin community at the broader level, and in the negative and in the positive. So social impacts could be adverse impacts on the community by things like additional noise, additional demands on services. There could also be positive impacts on the community, like a developer funded upgrade to the sewage treatment plant, and like additional employment opportunities. So social impacts are very broad, and they are quite complex. This application, as you would have heard from Jaden, involved the applicant preparing a social impact assessment, council engaging a professional peer reviewer, who was a social planner and also a development assessment planner, to undertake a peer review and make recommendations around how the social impacts could be managed and mitigated, as well as the submitter preparing their own social impact assessment with their own series of recommendations. Ultimately, council officers in consultation with councils peer reviewing social planner, recommend a series of amendments and updates to the most recent version of the applicant's social impact assessment, which do have some key performance indicators for ongoing management of impacts. They include things like Gen X to be involved in monitoring and engaging with the community and responding to community issues. They involve things like a code of conduct for the people who will be accommodated in the non-resident workforce accommodation, a whole series of measures. There's about 15 or more, which are actually in one of the attachments with some recommendations, if you would like to explore those in a little more detail.
You'd like that to be brought up on the screen, councillor James?
If, if you deem it relevant, like as I understand you, the point there, but I mean, if there's, if there's, if you think there's further information, because it's just a, it's a, you know, I'm just curious around, obviously, how, from an assessment point of view, an officer assesses that, and then as you said, there's all these other sides that have done their social impact on it. Now we've got a, a list of proposed offerings from the, from the applicant. I mean, is that a list that they came up with post this conversation, or was it suggested? Was it like, how did we reach this point?
So what we have in the report that's before you, and the recommendations in the report before you, is a, a list of conditions that council officers think are reasonable and relevant, and will withstand scrutiny and test, if subject to testing the P and E Court. That includes some amendments to the applicant's submitted social impact assessment, which we think in consultation with councils peer reviewing social planner, who as I said, is also a development assessment planner and understands the limitations of council's assessment and our conditioning powers under the Planning Act. A list of amendments council planners and this, and councils peer reviewer have come up with, that we are confident will manage the social impacts to the extent possible, in the context of a development application for a material change of use for a workforce accommodation. And I will just maybe take this opportunity to point out that social impact assessments on complex developments associated with large projects tend to be broad scale and are not often brought to a council in this, to assess and include in a development application, particularly a development application for a material change of use for a workforce accommodation. So some of the social impacts that you may have seen, particularly in the submitter's most recent material, are broad social impacts associated with lots of big projects going at once. And that's really important that those impacts are carefully considered and dealt with for the benefit of the community of Millmarin. It's also very important that council understands the limitations of our assessment and our conditioning power, and that is in the context of a material change of use for workforce accommodation. So two different sets of considerations. One, what are we considering in the context of this application before us today? And the other, what is really... And the other, what is really essential for the ongoing benefit of the community of Millmaron? And maybe how those different questions are dealt with is quite relevant to council. We are confident that the recommended conditions deal with the material that is relevant for council today, and we're confident that some of the material dealt with, the broader picture dealt with by the submitter, is very relevant for council to consider in ongoing conversations with the community of Millmaron.
Follow up. Is this just on reference to that? Is that the page you were talking about?
So, I understand that. So I suppose, reading that that's up here, so, using the words acknowledges that a temporary fifty-two percent population increase may affect local social cohesion. So that's something that is, I would assume, more or less measured on an influx of people into a smaller community and how that impacts cohesion. So, and I'm not taking anything away from the fact that there's some great offerings here. How does a solar system for the Millmaron Golf Club help social cohesion, based on a fifty-two percent increase of population? Do you know what I mean? Like, that's, I don't know, it's probably a broad, I understand what you're saying, that it's broad, but I'm just sort of trying, when I look through that. And as I said, I'll ask the submitter as well and the applicant, but I'm just trying to, I'm just, I don't know if I'm missing them, but I'm just trying to understand what social cohesion is addressing by those items.
So councillor, the application that is under assessment is for a workforce accommodation effectively. The issue that's been raised in the social impact assessments is that a lot of extra people, particularly a lot of individuals associated, not permanently associated with the area of Millmaron, coming to the, coming to Millmaron, working through the day, possibly going out in the evenings, could affect the fabric of the Millmaron community. That's an issue. That's a legitimate issue that really needs to be thought through carefully. How is it addressed? It's addressed to the greatest extent that planning officers feel is reasonable under a Planning Act assessment for a material change of use for a workforce accommodation through the conditions, including a series of measures that Gen X, as the proponent, has committed to. Some of those, we believe, are reasonable and relevant measures that can be conditioned by council, and council can take a proactive approach in conditioning those. Some of them are commitments, like you mentioned, it's about providing community facilities or funds to support other community facilities that are not necessarily council's responsibility, and it's not necessarily appropriate for council to step into that space where we condition that a particular private proponent ought to pay money to another entity within the community. So, we've been very careful to tease out the elements that we believe are reasonable and relevant for conditioning and the elements that Gen X has committed to. We flag those as, and identify them in our draft conditions, but we don't impose those expectations through conditions. And perhaps if it would help, Jayden might be able to actually read through some of those and we might be able to bring them up on screen.
And that more or less, so this list is above and beyond that, is what you're saying, more or less?
Probably the best way, if you'd like to really drill down into this question, would be for us to go through some of those commitments. They're actually quite simple. They're in a table form. And if I can pass over to Jayden.
I'd be happy to hear that, as long as through the indulgence of the chair, I've chewed up a lot of time here. So as long as that's.
I think the crux of your question, if I could summarise, councillor James, is that this list listed on page two of the report isn't a condition of approval. That's what your crux of the question is. Yet what we go to hear from now is a condition. That's correct. Yes.
Thank you councillor through the chair. I think I understand your question being largely wanting to get an understanding of how the proponent came to these commitments based on the social impacts. So, I suppose for context, the original social impact assessment provided by the proponent identified all of the wide ranging potential issues, some of which Chris mentioned, which some include economic impacts, supply chain issues, social impacts including crime, community identity, things like that. The social impact assessment then identified which stakeholders these issues might affect and then developed a range of proposed mitigation strategies which should address these matters. The summary that was provided on screen earlier, additional commitments that I suppose would be considered the flagship commitments by the proponent. But there are other commitments in Attachment nine, the addendum to the social impact assessment. And these broadly address the other wide range of potential social impacts. So, up there on screen, with the exception of, I believe it was G four, seven, nine and fourteen, all of the commitments in this table have been conditioned by council to be implemented. I will also note, just before running through this, that through our peer review process, we have also identified where some of these commitments need some refining, as some of them are a little vague, difficult to measure. So, there is a condition in, I believe it is condition ten, which outlines the amendments that are required to be made to this document. But generally, if I could just begin at G one, some of these commitments include ongoing community engagement, through a community engagement plan, continued engagement with the community through a variety of mediums, complaints mechanism. G four, this is one that incorporates some of those items that we saw on the screen earlier, which are specific commitments to certain targeted groups of the community. G five, this is, I suppose, a mitigation measure to support the businesses in the town, but also manage the expectations of the behaviour of the work site residents, as is G six. And you'll see at the top of some of these items are the related issues or the topics of the issues. So that one was workforce management. The next one above G nine is community wellbeing and health. So, this also includes provision of full-time nurse or doctor, transport of workers, liaising with service providers, donation of a fire truck, celebration and recognition of local Aboriginal culture, local business and industry participation. G fourteen, this is another one that is going to require some further detail provided by the proponent post-decision in terms of what is meant by maximising local employment and business participation. And then moving through finally to G sixteen makes reference to the infrastructure agreement that was then executed by council. So, there's a broad range of mitigation strategies that address, I suppose, four key themes of issues. Hopefully that answers your question.
Good. Any other questions? Councillor Trevor and then councillor Rebecca.
I'll ask at this time, getting to the nuts and bolts of the submission or the application. With all the rules, regulations and whatevers with the department of planning and development, does it tick all the boxes that we, that this submission proposal has been put forward? Are there any crosses against anything or does it tick every box that we as a TRC organisation require?
I'll hand over to Chris.
Thank you councillor. Every application is assessed against the planning scheme and planning instruments and relevant matters. This application as an impact assessable application has some inconsistencies with the planning scheme. These are addressed in the assessment report and they are not fatal to the application. This is considered to be appropriate at the scale and in that context, can be serviced and hence the recommendation for approval. There's quite significant effort put into the assessment report looking at all of the matters that council must assess against or have in regard to. That explains it in great detail. It is as consistent as council officers could have hoped for in the context of the application.
Thank you. Councillor Rebecca and then councillor Gary.
Thank you Chair through you. Thanks, Carrie, Chris and Jayden for this. So, we, the solar farm itself was approved ten years ago back in twenty fifteen. And what we're looking at today is just the accommodation in the camp component. And the report talks about the population of Millmaron being about fifteen hundred and that this, the, this will necessitate up to eight hundred workers at peak, which would be a fifty-two percent increase in the population of Millmaron. So it's considerable. And then that forty will remain on-site in service roles. So, once the construction phase has come and gone, the report talks about forty remaining in those service roles. So, I've got just a couple of questions at this stage, if I might, Chair. The first is, when we're talking about solar farms and solar panels, do we know what the life of a solar panel or solar farm is, please?
Thank you councillor through the chair. This particular approval that's associated with the construction camp below Creek has a conditioned maximum lifetime of fifty years from the commencement. At this time, that use is not commenced?
Yep. Okay, so fifty years. Thank you. And then we had a map up there previously. And it's Attachment five, the site context. And we can see some of the, yeah, thank you very much for that, Deanne. There's low, medium density residential in the bottom right-hand corner of this. And to my eyes, it looks like there's a lot of land available there for development. Is that a fair, is that a fair assessment? Like, we're talking probably hundreds of lots there, potentially?
Yes councillor, that is correct.
Okay.
I can expand on that a little. Some of that information was provided to me earlier today by our strategic planning team. There is around, at a low density development, consistent with a, yeah, consistent with what council might expect to actually occur. So, you can see, you can see it's zoned in that darker pink, low, medium density residential, regional residential precinct. That might have an expected density of twenty net dwellings per hectare. We would take a more conservative approach and say twelve might be more likely at a township like Millmaron where people want slightly larger lots and a little more space. There's a capacity for around eight hundred dwellings.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then it kind of touches a little bit on what councillor James was asking earlier about, about the social impact assessments and council's roles in this. And you mentioned it, I think, Chris, that, and if it wasn't you, it was in this report, that there have actually been changes or flag changes at a state government level in terms of the legislation, but that hasn't been applied yet. And so, obviously therefore this application hasn't gone through that process. That's correct?
Councillor, that's correct that there are changes in train. There's a bill going to state government shortly, which is seeking to introduce a whole different regime for assessing solar farms and wind farms. It wouldn't strictly apply to this development because this development is not for one of those. This is for accommodation.
Yeah, okay. And I had one more, if I could, Chair. Oh, that's right, about the renewable energy zone. So this is a renewable, we are a renewable energy zone. The state government deemed us that a few years ago. And in other areas of the state where there's emerging work fronts of renewable energy projects, these readiness plans are being undertaken by the state government. And my question is, is there a readiness plan that has been undertaken by the state government for this area?
Thank you councillor. So, there does not appear to be any state government plan for the REZ in this area. To the best of our understanding, officers' understanding is, there was progress done on this last year, but it never resulted in a complete document available to the public. I don't know what stage it got to. There's really no information available to officers. What we do know is that some other regions in the state have got readiness assessments done by state government. And what those do is they look at what projects are approved or proposed in that broader area and what are the impacts? What are they going to be? What towns are they going to be on? The localities are they going to be on? How are they going to be managed? What needs to occur before those impacts can be managed appropriately for the benefit of all of those communities? Now, those have happened in other parts of the state. They haven't happened here yet. It is a state obligation, in my view. So, it is something that it may be appropriate to bring to a conversation with the relevant state minister or their representatives.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Perfect timing. Councillor Gary, you had your question next.
Just in those conditions out of curiosity, like if I took the five hundred thousand to Donville Place, what trigger is that? Like, is it the start, the end, the middle of the project? Donville?
So councillor, the commitment that Gen X has made to upgrades or supporting Donville Place Park upgrade are not conditioned by council officers. So we haven't had any real input into that. But as I understand it, this is a commitment that Gen X has made in consultation with relevant parts of the community. They may be best placed to answer that at the appropriate time.
Very good. Thank you. We'll get to that stage very soon. Any other questions, councillors? If I could, through whoever may like to answer this, Jayden, just from a building phase of building the actual work camp, the period of time, which is a few months and one hundred people, is there any condition in there in regard to where those who are part of that construction phase, where they stay?
Thank you Chair. You are correct. There will be an estimated, I believe, sixty workers for a construction period of six to twelve months. There has not been any conditions imposed in relation to the workers required to build the workers' camp, I suppose.
Thank you very much. And maybe that's something to flag for the applicant might like to touch on that when they get the opportunity. If there's no more questions at this stage, noting councillors, we can come back to questions after we've heard from both the submitter and the applicant. I'd like to bring forward now, James, you, James, if you'd like to come forward. Welcome to you, James. And as I say, you've got ten minutes and I'll give you an eight-minute call, just to let you know. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor McDonald and councillors, and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this afternoon. As mentioned earlier, I'm speaking today on behalf of Adam Birch, the principal submitter. And Adam was unable to make it here for the scheduled start time today, so extends his apologies for that. I appreciate also, Mayor McDonald, the additional time, but I appreciate today's also been a big day with your earlier schedule. So, I'll endeavour to keep it direct into four key points that we really want to talk through today, which is minor clarifications on the assessment report that's been submitted, an update on the community's social impact assessment that's been referenced today, the relevance of the proposed amendments that you touched on councillor Von Hoff in relation to the planning framework as it all applied to wind farms and large-scale solar farms. And then also the Gen X mitigation measures or promises that they've put forward in their current. And then also the Gen X mitigation measures or promises that they've put forward in their current proposal. And we'd like to do that within the context that we're not advocating for the outright refusal of this development application. We think that done well, energy and resource projects can provide lasting and positive legacy impacts for rural communities like Millmarin. But in its current form, the Gen X proposal lacks, in our view, clarity in relation to a number of the mitigation measures or promises that have been put forward to the Millmarin community. And also has some information gaps that we believe should be addressed and resolved before a decision's made on the application. So whilst we're not seeking for a refusal of the development or advocating for a refusal of the development application, we are asking that council takes the time to get it right and considers a deferral of a decision on this development application to allow time for Gen X to submit a further and final social impact assessment that provides clarity on what the actual mitigation measures or promises are. Because if we don't know who's providing them, what they are or when, then we can't really make an informed judgement of whether those promises are adequate to offset an impact. That's sort of as simple as it gets. So, in relation to those four points that we raised earlier, minor clarifications on the report. The reference around the community social impact assessment was produced. During the three-week public notification period, we lodged a submission. Obviously, three weeks isn't sufficient time to be able to produce a comprehensive social impact assessment. So, we undertook in that submission that we would go away, take the time to prepare a community-led social impact assessment and submit that to council once complete. We did that over the preceding months with, led by Cheryl Rogers of Millmarin. And in February this year, that was completed. And we returned to council to provide an offer that the report be tabled to council. From our record, we didn't receive a response to that, but the offer remains open from our end to produce or table and discuss the findings of the community-led social impact assessment report, as we believe it's got some great content that would inform not only the Gen X proposal as it is today, but also more broadly some strategies for council to consider future applications that will inevitably come. With respect to second amendment was some comments, I think, made in the assessment report, which inferred through a conclusion that the applicant and submitter had had some discussions which resolved our position on the application, that the application was now acceptable to us. I think today, we're clarifying that's not the case. We think there's further improvement that could be made before a decision is put to or before a decision is made on the application. The two other points of clarification are in relation to the infrastructure agreement. So, and thanks for Jayden for reviewing that or taking us through that document earlier. I think from our perspective, we feel that that is a public document once it's executed. And we feel the community having the ability to actually understand what is in that document would be relevant to their decision-making process. Particularly as we understood it that those works would be removed at the applicant's cost at the end of the period, whereas a comment before from the specialist staffs indicated that it might be more permanent. And if it's been removed at the end of the process, that's not legacy-making. That's just offsetting an impact over a 10-year period time. The final clarification that we'd like to raise is just in relation to bed numbers. So, we understand that the maximum capacity of this camp is 800 beds over 10 years. But if we look at some of the material that's been submitted, I'm sure the proponents are able to clarify this, but some of the material indicates that by month 30, there's 150 Gen X workers at the camp. So, what we have sought clarity on is what the extra 650 people are for 90 months. If they're not Gen X workers, then who are they? And if they're not Gen X workers and they are another proponent, then the Gen X is able to lease the camp to over a period of time. Then that is another proponent sidestepping their obligation to Millmarin and not delivering a community benefit back to them. It also just brings into question some of the mitigation measures that have been put forward so far that talk to the life of the project and not the life of the camp. And we think that's instructive because if the life of the project is ending earlier, then the mitigation measures or promises that have been provided could be ending earlier as well. And I know that council sought to overcome that issue with condition 1.2, which seeks to limit the nature of the workers that could be at the facility. I think we just have some concerns in relation to the enforceability of those conditions, where if we've got 800 people in high vis, what is the proportion that is potentially Gen X workers and what is the proportion that may not be Gen X workers? The other briefly update, or moving to our next item in relation to the community SIA. As mentioned, the community has produced a comprehensive social impact assessment document which followed months, four months of community engagement and consultation. And it includes a number of strategies, particularly those around housing supply and providing permanent solutions to housing supply, not interim ones. And also around essential services and outlining some clear requirements as the community sees them in relation to schooling and police. And whilst we accept not all of those are directly at the feet of Gen X, it does provide some great recommendations that we feel, should the opportunity arise through a deferral of a decision, could really strengthen the current Gen X proposal in terms of its commitments back to, back to Millmarin. The third point is the relevance of the proposed amendments to the Planning Act, which will relate to large-scale solar farms and also wind farms. We completely acknowledge that that hasn't commenced and that's not something that Gen X needs to be held to now. What we do raise is that the reason why that legislation has come to be. So clearly, there is a, an understanding or intent that communities are not getting the clarity they need from proponents in relation to promises and mitigation measures. And the whole intent of that legislation is to front-load that and require a social impact assessment to be done and a community benefit agreement to be entered into before a proponent can even lodge a development application. What we're asking for here today is just to consider the context and the reason why that legislation has come to be when we're then looking at a recommendation to approve mitigation measures that are deferred. So, we are asking for some mitigation measures to be updated and resubmitted back to council in a document. We need to know what those mitigation measures are and what those promises are now before we can make a decision and decide whether or not they're acceptable to offset an impact of a 50% increase in population over 10 years. The, finally, just we come to the Gen X mitigation measures themselves. As, as I said earlier, we do this within the context of we're not advocating for the refusal of it. But even if we could go to some of the items that were raised at page two, that I think you had up there before that listed those items, I appreciate the point being made in relation to the council's view is that some of those-
Two minutes James.
Thank you Mayor. Some of those items can't be conditioned. But in the, if you're in the position of the community, they have read a document that is making an undertaking to them, that over a period of time, these things will be realised. And if we're not conditioning it, or if we can't condition it, at the very least, those things should be in detail in the social, in a revised social impact assessment that's provided back to council, that in the instance of the funding rebate or an energy rebate, how much is it, when it's getting paid and by who? In the instance of Donville Place, when is it getting paid, to who? And who's corporately responsible for that? In the instance of the contribution to the Millmarin State School, when is that getting paid and by who? These are some of the flagship commitments that aren't sitting within a condition of approval. And at the very least, they should be within a revised document that can be put to council that has clear mechanisms on when they are provided, who they're provided to and who's making that commitment. So, I think closing out our position, we don't object to the overall of the proposed camp and believe that done well, it can have positive, a positive impact on Millmarin township. But in its current form, there's not the clarity on what those commitments are, which really what this all boils down to. It's the social impact assessment and the mitigation measures or promises that are made within it. And we don't currently have the clarity to understand who's making the promise, when the promise is going to be delivered and what that promise is. Happy to, if there's any further questions.
Thirty seconds spare in credit for next time you're in here.
Okay, my promise.
Questions, questions councillor Bill and councillor Trevor?
Thanks Chair. James, just for clarity, that list there that you're just citing, those dot points, are these commitments that were given by the applicant as a result of discussion with the community?
So, the proponent will be able to outline in detail what their engagement process was, but these are the, these are the mitigation measures, promises that the, that Gen X have come up with and put out there as ideas to offset what their impact is. And we're not underestimating, some of those are really positive things. It's just that there's, if I'm a community member, I don't have a lot of clarity about when they're actually going to be delivered.
So, my question is, were they generated by the applicant? Not by the community or what?
Well, they were generated by the applicant, but through consultation activities with the community.
That's right.
That's right. So, and then likewise, the community, a group of the Millmarin community have produced a comparable social impact assessment that includes some of these things as well, as well as some other measures that they feel provide a more positive and lasting legacy than some of the suggestions that are put forward in the Gen X SIA.
Thanks, one more question?
Sure councillor Bill.
Your reference to the balance of workers. Can you just run me through that again?
Yep. So, in the material that's been lodged over the course of time, there's, it's always been 800 beds, 10 years as the maximum component. There's just some figures and some references throughout the application material, including the town planning report and the regional social impact assessment that refer to or show that at month 30, if a second project doesn't come off, the Gen X workforce will reduce to 150. And then, so, as not being in the detail and on the other side of the fence, there's on face value 90 months and 650 beds. And originally, what our concern around that was, can those beds be leased to other non-resident workers and that monetized by Gen X? Can those, that mean that other proponents can have 650 beds over 90 months and not be able to make commitments to the Millmarin community as they should?
So, would it be, I don't want to, would it be a fair assumption that you might be implying that this is a supply chain company to other alternative energy or green energy companies?
No sinister implication, other than the detail for our, for ours, from our perspective, just isn't there. There's just a question to be answered, which I think council seeks to overcome in condition 1.2. So, this can only be Bullseye Creek, say, Gen X workers. I think just that, having a look at some of the material submitted, there's just an information mis-closed there that probably could be answered by, by Gen X. But if that's not watertight, that condition that it can only be Gen X staff that are there, then there's just a risk that there's 650 people from our perspective that can stay there, that aren't Gen X workers, that could be related to other projects.
That have no commitment to-
That have no commitment to Millmarin. Or on the flip side, that if the Gen X project winds up at month 30, then a number of these things where it says for the life of the project, for your energy rebates, those sorts of things, are they guaranteed?
So, onto the staff Chair.
Sure.
So, are we, have we got clarity on that point?
The answer I would offer councillor might be a bit broader. And that relates back to the state government's responsibilities under the REZ readiness assessments. So, the REZ readiness assessments are looking at all of the projects in an area and all of the impacts of those projects and how they might all be mitigated. Now, I would suggest based on a careful reading of the most recent submitter's social impact assessment, the people of Millmarin see merit in a single 800-person workers' accommodation at this particular location, rather than a series of smaller accommodation facilities. That seemed to come out quite clearly in the consultation material that was provided. What hasn't been assessed is all of the impacts of doing that. So, what we do have, what has been applied for and what council has assessed is the impacts from the Gen X proposal and the Gen X workers being transported to the Gen X site, Bullseye Creek. So, that's what we are comfortable, we've assessed and we can recommend an approval for. We acknowledge that there is a high likelihood down the track that these beds will be an attractive facility for a broader workforce. And that is all stuff that is dealt with by state government in the REZ readiness assessments that have been done in other areas and we don't have one yet. So, I think what council officers have done is to impose or recommend the imposition of a condition that limits this particular facility, if it's approved, to the workforce that has been demonstrated, can be accommodated in this facility and the impacts are known. Understanding that it is common practice and we would anticipate that if there is additional demand down the track, that may be applied for. And if it is assessed and it's demonstrated to be acceptable, then council officers may be able to make a recommendation to approve that. As I said, that's not what we've assessed and it's not what we've recommended today because it hasn't been applied for. But it seems like a really good, common sense, logical solution down the track to ensure that we have one facility that accommodates a broad workforce and is not underutilised.
Thanks Chris. I don't disagree, but I just have some concerns that the Millmarin community actually have some avenues for commitments by other potential proponents that may use that facility in the future.
So, it's a good question councillor, who's, who's making the commitment? So, the approval runs with the land. The approval contains the draft conditions, contain conditions that run with the land and set the expectations and include an approved document with, with recommended updates. So, the, if the, while the approval is operating, it'd be my view that the obligations would carry, the obligations that a condition would carry. In reference to the term project, whether that, there's some ambiguity or potential ambiguity around what the project is. The project, some people could take that to mean Bullseye Creek Solar Farm. Some people could take that to mean the, the construction accommodation, the non-resident workforce accommodation. That's actually conditioned to be amended in our recommended conditions. It's something that Social Impact Assessment Peer Review picked up. And there are some changes recommended by council's peer reviewing social planner that clarify what the project means. And the project means the workforce accommodation, which is subject to the application before you.
One more if I may, I know. So, the responsibility, the application goes with the land, that's fine. But the responsibility in that 10-year period, if there are other entities that choose to use this facility, the responsibility would lie with this applicant to make good on social impact or commitments made to the Millmarin community. Those that have been clarified, it sounds like there's some that haven't been.
So, what we have assessed and what we're recommending council may want to approve is for the Gen X proposal with a limitation in condition one on what workforce may be accommodated. Any other workforce or any other person who doesn't fit that criteria to be accommodated there, that would require a change approval. And in that change, all of these questions could be addressed before council officers would be satisfied that a change was appropriate.
That would seem more suitable.
Which I think is where, James was saying, that condition does strengthen your, the concerns of the submitter. Now, I'm noting that we've got James here for questions. So, councillor Trevor, you were up next and councillor Rebecca and then councillor Kerry. You've got a line up James.
James, and I'll be asking this question of the other submit, other speaker as well. What type or what sort of consultation have you done with the Millmarin community?
Well, through the preparation of the, so the community has led a social impact assessment. And that's involved two to three months of consultation with local community members, organisations and businesses. I think probably just to the earlier point, that was something that the community was keen to present to council or councillors in detail what the methodology was in terms of the consultation, but also the findings of that, of their own assessment that they've led. Again, on the basis that we think it's got some constructive recommendations for this proposal as well as, as well as others that inevitably will come.
Speaking broadly, do you think the Millmarin community is behind this or have they still got questions?
I, I think that going to, I think Chris's summary of the submitted community SIA is accurate and my statement that we're not seeking for it to be refused. But I think there has to be, conditioning amendments to a document, I accept where we're seeking plan amendments and the like. But in this instance, the amendments or what we're talking about, the SIA is fundamental to the actual concept. So, I don't, our position is we shouldn't be conditioning to strengthen those parts of the SIA. We should be asking the applicant to provide those now, so that we can actually see the detail, both from the community's perspective and then also from the councillor's perspective, so that we've got confidence that even if we can't impose, as a, if councillor's view that some of these monetary contributions can't be imposed through conditions, then at the very least, in a written form and on a public record, the mechanisms by when they're going to be paid and who to are clear.
Okay, thank you. Thanks councillor Trevor, councillor Rebecca?
Thanks Chair, through you. Thank you for this, James. I'm going to just spin myself around here, otherwise I've got my back to you. And now I've got my back to councillor Melissa, so sorry about that.
I win.
I hear what you're saying about not outright refusing this, but that it needs, it needs a little bit more detail and clarity. And what you're asking for is a deferral. But for us, can we just get some clarity? And you probably know this answer yourself, James, but through the officers. A deferral today, what would that mean in terms of a deemed refusal and the potential for us to be on a short trip to the P and E Court?
Thank you councillor. So, as I understand it, the decision period ends today. For an impact assessable application, if a decision isn't made within the decision period, the applicant has the ability to immediately commence appeal proceedings in the P and E Court against council's deemed refusal.
Okay, thank you. So, given that, we still have the questions about clarity that you're, that you raised. And what you were ideally after was that community benefit agreement or some sort of revised document. And this isn't so much a question to you, it's just more of a statement, which is that if we, if we are on a timeframe whereby we have to consider that from, the, the decision-making period ends today, this is a public record, today's meeting is a public record. And those promises and commitments from the applicant can be viewed and I would imagine will be viewed by the state government. And, and so I flag, I suppose, those social impact assessment, attachment nine issues that are up on the screen there. Going through them when the applicant comes up one by one to get some more detail about who, what, when. Because that then is a copy of the pub, public record that fleshes out those issues a little bit more, Chair. So, it's not a direct question for James, but I, it's a comment and sort of a flagging for the applicants when they come up as well. Thanks.
Very good, councillor Kerry.
My question was the effects of the deferral that's been answered, thank you.
Thanks very much Kerry. Any other questions for James? If not, James, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unless there was something else you needed to clarify out of those questions.
I'd only clarify, alternatively, there's also no deemed approval. So, whilst there's, yep, we go into a territory where deemed refusal, where an applicant may initiate a, a appeal to the Planning Environment Court, there's not the alternative where it's a deemed approval and the applicant can go on their merry way with the approval that they have. So, we enter into a period where there's no immediate consequence and the applicant is then put forward with the option of either going through an appeal process that they have to initiate or potentially negotiating to get a better outcome for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Very good. So, councillors, I know we invite the applicant to come forward, so Aaron will tell. As you're coming up, you've got 10 minutes collectively. Collectively, and I'll give you a call at the eight-minute mark. So, thank you. And you've got a bit more information there, but you will be able to make use of question time. I'll keep that as well, thanks.
We didn't have a presentation per se, but I can talk to a couple of the questions that have already been asked, which I think are pertinent. So, with regards to formulating these mitigations. So, I joined GenX almost a year and a half ago. And that community engagement process has been ongoing since I joined as a project director. So, there's been multiple different forums. We've engaged with the community. We've had information sessions where we've got up and we've presented to the local community. We've engaged and gone to meetings with Milmaran Commerce Progress Inc. Myself and Aaron have both attended those meetings. We have attended the Milmaran Show and had stalls at Milmaran Show. And most importantly, in the formulation of the social impact assessment, one of my colleagues and myself, we went to Milmaran and we went to talk to a bunch of the businesses and people in the community. So, we spoke to Josh, who owns the Millen Tavern. We spoke to the acting sergeant, Trent Vanbuuren. We spoke to a bunch of people in the community, at least up at the hospital, to try and understand what they knew of the development. We explained it to them. We asked them what sort of impacts they thought it would have and how we might mitigate that. And that's how we came up with these things like providing a locum doctor. So, at least at the hospital, said that it is already a struggle for some people to get in to see a doctor and they're worried about the stress that extra people in the town might put. So, the first thing we talked about was we were going to have a nurse, full-time registered nurse on the site and in the camp. So, therefore, that would pick up 90% of those people wouldn't need to go to the doctor. But we would support providing a locum to cover that peak period of construction, which wouldn't be there just for the use of the camp. It's there for the people of Milmaran, sorry. So, that's, that's how we came up with those or formulated those through that process. Another point that was raised was, was how are those documented? Well, for example, the $400,000 commitment in Donville Place, that, that is in writing and that is being put to writing to Milmaran Progress Inc. So, we've given them a letter stating that, that, that will occur, that commitment. And it is premised on us reaching financial close for the project. And financial close is when we obviously get the money so that we can provide that. And we need this development approval to get to financial close. So, there's a series of dominoes there. But essentially, once we get there, we will fund that. And that would be, you know, we're, we're targeting end of the year and if we can get there, great. And that's the same for, obviously, the locum and those things have to be timed for when we get approvals and when we can actually start construction. So, that's sort of the process we went through in formulating those mitigation measures.
Yeah, just if I could add to it, guys, just to clarify, I guess, some, some points made by the submitter. The peak workforce numbers.
Eric, just go closer to the microphone, please, thank you.
The peak workforce numbers that we've, that we've nominated, and for which the camp DA has been applied for, as in 800. That 800 is, is for, certainly for the initial stage one solar farm project for a very short period of time, out of the full 30-odd month construction phase or construction period. The same will apply to the subsequent stages of, of, of the entire energy park. So, stages two, three and four being battery, another solar farm and another battery. Those principles will apply. Obviously, at this stage, we are still yet some way from pitting down exactly what those workforce histograms look like for those subsequent stage projects. But certainly have applied for a 10-year period for this construction camp to contemplate the full suite of those projects being constructed. We fully acknowledge that the application and, and the council's conditions will be for only our workforce, for only the initial stage one project, construction phase. And it's not open to be offered to other proponents for other projects or other businesses in the region. Any of those arrangements, you know, that we may contemplate will obviously need to be applied for, especially back to council again. There are, you know, I'll be honest, there are other proponents around the region that have approached us about potential using, you know, using the camp. We are open to that, no problem. But, but again, that obviously needs to be subjected to a further series of consultations and, and approval processes with, with TRC. Just in time, a final comment on the, on, on each of these commitments that we've made, which are outside of the, of the proposed conditions that TRC have, are suggesting. As Tal said, you know, this, these have all come through all by way of, of significant consultation with community groups and principally led by Milmaran Commerce Chamber Inc. Each one of these will have a, have a document put together, a funding document put together, which will lay out exactly how the, the funds will flow, when they'll flow, et cetera. The full suite of these things will be implemented through the course of the 30-month construction phase. Some of them will happen straight away. The Milmaran Golf Club one, for example, will happen straight away. Donville Place will happen straight away, pending, obviously, the approval of, of that development and the works that Milmaran Chamber and Commerce are leading. The State School, that can happen straight away. Again, that depends on, on obviously further consultation with the school themselves, et cetera, et cetera. So. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much. Well, I'm truly under time, so you've got four minutes left, so there you go. Councillor Carol, we'll go over to you first, then councillor Trevor.
And just to you, just a little bit nonplussed about the, the nurse or locum doctor within the Milmaran community. If you're planning 800 people and bringing 52% of the population, increasing it by 52%, I suggest you're either going to have to have a really accident-free, no illness workforce or that doctor or nurse, it says, or nurse are going to be pretty much kept busy in your camp if you have 800 people there.
I guess I can just clarify that. So, it's not, it's not an end-all. So, we will have a registered nurse in the camp 100% of the time. Yeah, yeah, acknowledge that, but I'm just, just clarifying. And we are also committed to providing a locum doctor in addition to the nurse that we will have. So, the nurse that we will have will be for the people who are staying in the camp to try and prevent them causing any stress on the local doctor service. And then, in addition, we will provide a locum for the peak construction.
Just to clarify also, the, in terms of our experience with, with, with construction camps, so we're currently operating a camp up in North Queensland, 400-person camp. We have a full-time nurse practitioner on that project 24/7.
Aaron, can you just get closer to the microphone, please?
Yeah, so, in, in our experience, you know, a full-time nurse practitioner on the, in the camp, based at the camp, to be honest, they're not overly, actually overly busy. The small percentage of cases that are serious, they facilitate and coordinate RFTS evacuation from the site to a more major hospital, so, and we do the same here.
Thank you, councillor Trevor.
I said I would ask this question as well. Your consultation with the Milmaran community, I think you've answered that fairly well, but you got anything else to answer regarding your consultation? I've got a couple more questions after that.
Not, not, not really. I think I can answer any other specific questions.
And the perception you got from the Milmaran community was favourable or unfavourable?
Yeah, look, those three days we spent in Milmaran, talking to, to a bunch of people, I have to say, the overall impression was, was really positive. And I attended the Milmaran Commerce and Progress Inc. meeting last meeting. Again, overall impression is very positive. So, yeah, the impression going through that process was that it was supported. And as I said, issues were, not to say that things weren't identified, they were. And, and that's why we've looked to try and mitigate those.
Okay. And on public record, what would the energy rebate be?
What we've looked at, so initially, it was during construction phase, as Aaron mentioned, but we've looked at moving that to an operational phase. So, we were looking at $300 per residence for the, for the 15 years, first 15 years of operations of the solar farm.
Okay. And the promises, I'm calling them promises, that have been put up on the board here. How can you clarify that 110% in writing or whatever?
I'll let Aaron answer one, but I, I guess just for the first two. So, we, we, we will enter into a benefit sharing agreement with the Bigginball people. As part of that process, we've been negotiating with them directly over the last 12 months. And as I said, there is a letter which has been provided to Milmaran Commerce Inc. with regards to Donville Place already.
Yeah, so, I mean, all of these commitments we have made public. They've been made public through Milmaran Chamber.
And your unofficial record today too.
Correct, yep. And we also intend in the next several weeks to publicly advertise on the, on the Milmaran, or sorry, the Milmaran Community Facebook page and, and as well as the, the local newsletter, so.
And the fire, fire truck and firefighting equipment will be, it says it, completion of construction of the farm? Is that at the completion of the farm?
Construction of the, of the initial stage one solar farm.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And, and just, just to add to the, to the rebate scheme, that'll apply equally to each of the four projects in the, in the zone. So, every project, so potentially, once all four projects are, are completed, a, a resident that can demonstrate a Milmaran postcode will attract $1,200.
Okay, so that's 300 times four for each stage of the thing. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Carol, I'll go back to you quickly.
Question, sorry, I meant to ask this. When do you envisage the money will come through for these, for some of these things? How long do you think that is going to be? Is it going to be after it's built, before or?
As soon as we reach financial close, which we, we're, we're targeting, you know, imminently, these, these funds will be in place for every single one of these things. Yeah, so, so, yeah, some of these things, as I said earlier, can happen immediately. Some of them will obviously take a little bit longer in terms of any other approvals that specific projects need to go through. But, yeah, the funding will be available immediately.
Thanks, councillor Rebecca.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. Thanks, gents, for being here. And thank you for the community consultation that you've done as well with Milmaran. And when James was speaking, I said, I flagged that we'd go through them one by one. You've largely done that through the questions from my colleagues just now, noting that this is a public record. But is there anything further on any of those dot points? Any details about who, what, when, where that you'd like to add at this point?
I don't think so, guys. I'm happy to answer any specific questions on any of those offers if there are any.
So, the proper list as opposed to this list?
Yeah, so this is just a summary, so.
Okay, that's, so we're comfortable with that summary, councillors, of the response we've got there? So, now, now we're going to the more extensive list, which is attachment nine?
Yes, which is the, yes, which is the full list contained in the SIA, yeah.
And that has the timing, the responsibility and the measure on that? So, that's, and those ones that are on that other page are included in these as well?
Correct.
Correct.
And if, if, if I'm correct, it's so hard to toggle between everything, Chair, but you've actually, I think, given a few more details on some of those projects than what's in this attachment. For instance, from memory, the rebate listed was actually $200 and there was no, there was no specificity about per annum or per household or anything like that. You've actually said 300, I think. And, and we also just were wondering about the idea of a rebate. It would probably be more, well, correct me, is it a rebate? Or would it be a voucher of some sort of, how would that actually work in reality?
You're quite right. And unlike the state government or the federal government's rebate scheme on, on energy bills that are, that are coordinated and facilitated through energy retailers, we are not a retailer, so we, we can't do or facilitate that in that manner. What we will do is put in a, a, a process whereby people will, will make an application and prove and demonstrate that they have a Milmaran postcode and those payments will be made essentially by way of a cash payment to each of those applicants. So, whilst, you know, and, and it's, it's stated to be a contribution or a rebate towards people's energy bills, but as a cash payment, obviously.
You can sense, you can sense us as councillors, we're trying to get as much detail about this because the point raised by James is, is a fair one about, you know, committing, for instance, just what we see here now, committing $400,000 to support the Donville Place redevelopment. And you've given more detail about when that would be, when that is and that's an agreement between yourselves and the Milmaran Progress Association. But you can sense that we, we need to understand those details to have confidence that, that our, our community has long-term legacy. So, I, I'm grateful for that. If I can, if I can go to your workforce, please, Chair, through you. So, the report talks about there being, I'll just get it up here. We used to be able to highlight and it's just harder now. Approximately 40 will remain on-site in service roles with the remainder working at the solar farm. So, can we just talk about those numbers going forward? Because you know, we know that there was, there's no rental accommodation available at the moment in Milmaran. Housing availability is point one, point two.
We will adopt the same principles we've adopted for the construction of these projects in terms of BYO accommodation. So, what that looks like exactly is still yet to be worked out. But initially, our plan is that those workers will be accommodated in this facility to start with. And then in the medium to longer term, we will work together with our O and M services provider to work out more long-term. So, that could be that we're employing people that are already located in Milmaran or one of the townships nearby, in which case. in which case they have their own accommodation. Or it could be that we build, uh, and establish a smaller facility for a select number of individuals, um, in, in Millmaron, for example, or somewhere nearby. Um, yeah, so we fully acknowledge that the stress and the strain on the existing accommodation that's available in Millmaron. Um, yeah, and obviously it wouldn't be possible to build a project of this scale without obviously a camp of this size.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, and, and, and acknowledge that 20 people plus, potentially plus their families, um, you know, locating or relocating to, to the region for the, for the long term is, is equally as stressful on the, on the existing accommodation.
Hmm. Um, and final one, if I can, Chair, just. So in, in local government land, we all talk to each other. And, and you'll probably be familiar with the approach of some of the other local government areas, um, whereby when they have, now that the, now that these renewable energy zones are being rolled out, um, and particularly the resource councils that have, that have come through, um, gas, coal, and, um, and there's been a lot of learnings from those. And now we're going into, um, wind, solar, hydro, pumped hydro, that they are basically require, requiring, um, proponents to, um, have a positive impact on the, the legacy and the housing shortages that those communities are experiencing. Are you familiar with some of those wo- that work that's being done in other, other local government areas, such as just our neighbour here, Weston Downs Regional Council?
We are indeed, and we're obvi- very closely following those developments and, and those processes, absolutely.
Okay, because, um, I, you know, the report talks about 40, uh, remaining on-site. And you've actually just, you've talked more about in stage one, there being between 15 and 40, acknowledging that some of those could already be in Millmaron. Um, and that you do have this BYO accommodation philosophy to this. So I think there's actually probably a place that we can arrive at here where, um, there's, your philosophy aligns with where the community needs houses to be, um, developed. And also, we're consistent with what other local government areas are doing. Um, so a flag that we may, um, ask for councillors to consider an amendment to the conditions. Um, but, and those would speak to the permanent housing of some of those employees with the solar farm. But, um, that's all I have for now, Chair, and, and I'll just see if my colleagues have any further questions. Thank you.
Sounds like you're familiar with the, uh, what, what's happening. And, um, maybe we're not far away from putting a potential amendment up on the screen or addition. Councillor James?
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, thank you for outlining that. That list obviously is a flag at the start, a bit more of an understanding around it, so I think that's, that's, that's important. Do you have any, and speaking of leaving positive impacts on, on, on the local community, do you have any goals or targets around, say, local procurement or local spend? That's something that we as a council are quite big on, obviously, our targets around local. Is, and I don't know whether that is applicable or how that would be applicable in terms of goods and services and uses and things, but is there any, anything within your plans around your local procurement, local spend?
Sure. It is, it is something which we will certainly track and measure with our, uh, EPC contractor in terms of local content. So from the, from the perspective of employing people, um, so that, they'll be tracking, you know, indigenous, uh, and female participation. Uh, they'll also be tracking, uh, local area participation, um, so how many people are working from the local area. And yes, we definitely encourage them to source locally where we can. Um, there, there will be no hard target per se in terms of that, but we certainly are making them track that and, and report on that. And we will look to maximise that where we can.
So each of our contracts has a requirement to, you know, maximise local participation as much as possible. Uh, and that includes the O and M services provider for the camp as well, so.
So, does that answer your question, James? Just leaning into that a little, little bit further if, if we could. So council has a, a 60% target of local spend. And, uh, and therefore noting that there, there isn't a target listed, but there is goodwill to say, yes, we will buy local. Um, is it something that you would consider to track and report to the community, given the good work you've been doing with the Chamber of Commerce there? And that's obviously, it's a relationship that you've been building over time, and it's, seems a positive one. Is it something you'd report to?
Be absolutely report, like, locally and transparently on, on how we're tracking this, you know, local employment, local procurement, absolutely, no problem.
That's, that's terrific to hear, and, and probably as a base, we have a 60% for local council. So that, that would be, um, you know, not a bad base to start, I guess, if it's possible. You know, some things you can't purchase locally.
No, I, I guess I would just temper that and say, happy to track it, happy to report. Uh, just noting that a lot of the key equipment is going to be sourced from overseas. Um, and that's just a, a function of, of where that key equipment comes from. Um, and that's going to be, that's going to be a lion's share of dollars, like, there's some big-ticket items there, so just.
We're, we're the same, same situation.
Yeah, 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 I agree, too.
Very, very much so. But something, um, that we're very, we are very strong on. And you, you sense in the room here that we, we, we definitely see the benefits of this, and we want to make sure, and for good or bad, you're our first genuine test case.
And I guess, I guess that's why, you know, when we came up and spoke to the.
Gary, I think, was next. Yeah. Councillor Gary, then.
Yeah.
Hey.
I think, you know, this local procurement's not really about pinching people from jobs in town because, uh, towns get pissed off at that. I think it's more the materials and where.
What's your, your materials?
Yes, I think that's what people are more.
Utilising local businesses?
We do have maintenance on all the, a lot of the gas and, uh, you know, once you use local workers. But the town people hate it when you go pinch their workers.
Yeah, no, workforce is an issue, and that's been part of your project.
And I guess that's, that's the line we've, we've tried to walk. Um, I know it's, I know it's difficult, but in, in, when we're doing that social impact and engaging with the community. And that's why we came up with things like, uh, the no-wet mess, um, and providing a bus to take people in town. So we're trying to, to walk the line of, um, providing revenue to the community and opportunities for people to spend money in the community, but again, not overloading or stressing resources. Um, so, you know, hopefully we can get that balance right, but that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Trevor?
Just clarity on that energy rebate, 300 times four. Householder, how are you going to determine a household? Are you going to send it to the house? Or, because you've got renters, you've got owner-occupiers, owner-occupied could own five houses in Millmaron. How does that all work out?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question, and we have had a, a think about exactly that. Um, I think in principle, if an owner was occupying their own home and they were able to demonstrate and prove that they are the owner of the property and they're residing at that property, then obviously that's fairly straightforward. Um, for a renter of a particular property, again, if they're able to demonstrate that they are occupying a particular home and they are actually renting that property, um, and they are actually paying the electricity bill, then that, again, is, is, is demonstrative proof for us to be able to pay them, not the owner of the property, it's the renter that we get.
You may have some work to do there, because I know there are some visa workers out there, and they may not understand the whole thing, and it'd be great for them to get the $300 and hopefully spend it within the community.
No, for sure. Yep. I understood, and I, and we have prepped those exact questions and issues coming up. Yep.
Thank you. Uh, councillors, any other questions? I have one, if you're going back to that other, I've just got one, um, in regard to the, the workforce for the work camp, to build the work camp. Um, did you have any ideas on, on how you can manage that?
They'll reside at the camp, Mayor McDonald, so.
They'll reside at the camp even when they're building it?
No, sorry, sorry, that, for the construction of the camp. No, they are building a flying camp, um, a temporary camp on the site. Um, so they will accommodate themselves essentially on the site while the pro- while the camp's being built. And then once that, the camp is completed, um, that'll be taken away.
Okay, I, I hadn't seen that anywhere, uh, listed. It's an important one for community to understand that.
Yep.
That that is the case, you'll have no net impact on residential properties during the, the build of the work camp.
Correct, yep. Builder of the camp is, is again bringing their own accommodation.
Camp for camp.
Camp, yes.
Camp for a camp, okay. Thank you. Uh, councillor Rebecca?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Uh, through you to Deanne, if we could just get up the, um, the recommendation from officers, including the amended, um, recommendation, the amended version, please. So, gentlemen, um, this really speaks to what we were talking to just before, um, and it'll come up in a tick. Um, listening to your numbers, so it's not to say that there'd be 40, um, to say that there would be 40 people, um, on-site in service roles continually, listening to what you're saying, you're actually pitching that number closer to 15 plus?
I, I think the clarification is we're building in four stages. So for stage one, which is the first three years we're talking about, it would be 15 to 20.
Okay, great.
And 40 was looking at all four stages.
Only when all four stages are constructed.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and so the question then is, where do the people live? Um, I think this is consistent with what you're talking about with BYO accommodation, um, because we do know, you know, how tight the accommodation, um, the housing shortage is in Millmaron and across the region generally. So what we have up here is an amendment that would, um, in addition to the coun- to the council officer's recommendation, um, that the, thanks, Deanne, if we could just go down a little bit, uh, to, to A, please, so that the CEO, um, negotiate and enter into a community benefit agreement with the proponent to facilitate the delivery of additional permanent residential accommodation within the township of Millmaron, generally in accordance with the following requirements. A, to comprise at least 12 en-suited bedrooms designed to support the long-term housing needs of the operational workforce of the approved solar farm. And it says at least 12, so, um, nothing's stopping you from building many more. But B, be completed and available for occupation prior to the commencement of commercial operations of the solar farm. C, be designed in a manner that is consistent with the established residential character of Millmaron. D, comply with all relevant planning and building regulations. And E, to provide evidence of completion to council prior to the commencement of the operational use. So, um, appreciate that you're just seeing that, but it, on face value, seems to be consistent with what you're saying. Any thoughts on what you can see there as, um, an amendment?
Yeah, look, I, I think in principle, I think we would be happy to, to engage with council and with the CEO to, to negotiate something along these lines. Um, I guess just a couple of thoughts, immediate thoughts. Um, at this stage, it's obviously not 100% certain, of course, around exactly where these people are going to come from. So it's foreseeable or conceivable possibly that some of these people may come from existing locations in and around Millmaron or, or nearing towns. Um, secondly, I think, as I said earlier, I think initially our plan would be for accommodation of these people to be at the camp that we're building to start with for the construction phase, because it's going to be there for quite some time, even into the operational phase. So I think if we could be a little bit flexible and perhaps just change the wording around the timing of these things being built and done and ready for use, then, look, yeah, I think we can, we can work, work together with, uh, something around these, along these lines, yeah, for sure.
I g- I guess from, from a perspective of what it is, there's, there's a negotiation point in there for the CEO
Yep.
to negotiate that element of it. Uh, by and large, it seems like it's a, a reasonable, reasonable condition for us to be voting on that.
Hmm.
Given that, that you have, um, the CEO's delegation to negotiate.
Yep. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions, councillors? Councillor Edwina?
Just one last one. I'm just coming back to the numbers with the 800 beds. Um, your maximum amount of employees at any one time would be how many, sorry?
During construction?
During construction, yeah.
Maximum number of employees?
Yep.
Or number of people employed on the project?
Well, as in how many beds will be filled approximately of those 800, all of them?
All 800.
During stage one, we, we expect to get close to 800. Um, so that's why we expect a peak between 700 and 800.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councillors? There's no other questions. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, gentlemen, do appreciate it. Very much indeed. Aaron and Tal, thanks. The councillors, uh, before we do reinstate standing orders, are there any other questions for council officers? There's no other questions for council officers. Item number three then is to reinstate standing orders. I can have someone to, uh, to move that. Move by councillor Melissa, second by councillor Edwina. Those in favour? Motion is carried. Now, councillors, we, we need to mo- work through this, uh, when it comes up on screen, uh, to be absolutely crystal clear of what we are voting for, given the verbal commitments from, um, the applicant and certainly the submitter's, uh, requests. Um, keeping that in mind, what we're voting on here is not going to that finer detail. So we've placed on the public record the commentary from, from the applicant here this afternoon. What we have before us, though, is the first part of the motion, which we've seen, and the second part of the motion, which has been brought forward today. Uh, are there any questions, councillors, in regard to the motion for officers? If there's no questions, councillors, I don't propose to read through that again, uh, noting that we have gone through it, um, in a fair detail. Therefore, the motion there is before us. Can someone move? Move by councillor Rebecca, second by councillor Melissa. The motion is now on the table. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Scroll down the screen a little bit. Thanks, Trevor. Councillor Mantiffle. Uh, anyone wishing to speak against the motion? If that is the case, uh, we've got a mover, councillor Rebecca, second by councillor Melissa. I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, all those in the gallery. We appreciate it. Uh, thank you to the submitter and the applicant. We do appreciate it, and we look forward to, uh, working through those negotiation pieces as well. And if I could offer a little bit of advice to the applicant is to continue working closely with community. Uh, we, we are fiercely, fiercely after the best result for our community. That's what we're, we're chasing. We need you to be successful. We need the community to have some legacy, lasting positive legacy. What you've put forward is, is, uh, very positive indeed. Um, hearing from the submitter today, you can see that there could be still some work to be done, and I ask you to continue to do that in good faith. We may not be able to condition something, but in good faith, for the benefit of all, and setting a pathway for further proponents that are coming our way, it sets a, it sets us a clear passage, a clear benchmark for others to follow. And, uh, for that, we would appreciate. Thank you very much.